entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session so that we can convene as the local Board of Health. The move, second?
Second.
All's in favor?
No.
Post? We're now adjourned from the legislation session for Wycomico County Council and have convened as the local Board of Health for the purposes of getting our report on the health of the county from our health officer. This is Lori Brewster. Good morning.
Good morning. You have a packet coming around that gives you a report on our community health improvement actions for your review at your leisure. Can never come here anymore without a report on COVID. As you well know, our numbers in this county are ticking back up. We are close to a 14% positivity rate today. We are probably, I think, the third highest in the state. We actually saw a little bit of a slowdown in our cases up until the first week in May, and then we were seeing about 17 cases per day as opposed to the five or six that we were seeing in the month of April. Doesn't appear to be any pattern, no age group, no geography, et cetera, that we can pinpoint for this current wave, and I'm hoping that it is short-lived so that we don't have to gear back up because, as you can imagine, everybody, including my staff, is tired of We continue to test for COVID as well as vaccinate, and we moved our testing and vaccination operations to our Fritz Building out of the Civic Center so the Civic Center could actually have their space back open to them. We also continue to give out the at-home COVID test kits, and we have requested an additional supply in anticipation of a surge again in the fall.
So there was a third round of the home test kits available now?
From the federal government, yes. And our test kits you can get at the libraries, you can get them at the Fritz Building. So, you know, we continue with our normal mitigation strategies with the testing and the vaccination. Some jurisdictions have encouraged masking. I am not there yet, I will say that, because I think that, as I said very early on, we are all tired of COVID. And at some point, you know, we had, health officers had a discussion last week about when are we going to make this endemic in our society and treat it just as we do other disorders such as flu and things like that. Fortunately, with this round, our hospitalizations have remained low. I think today there were nine hospitalizations. I don't know if all of tho-- I don't believe all of those were from Wycomico County. But as you recall, when I came here in October, we were in the 40s and 50s every day for hospitalizations, so we're on a good track for hospitalizations. We also are doing boosters. Those that are 50 and older are eligible for their second booster if they so choose. All they have to do is call our hotline or show up at the Fritz Building during our boost, during our vaccination times.
What's our vaccination rate right now? Are you getting to that? I don't want to get ahead of you.
No. So it depends upon what age group, but overall, we are at about 60% fully vaccinated, and fully vaccinated is the first and the second dose. I will say, we are the third lowest vaccinated county in the state of Maryland, and we go everywhere to try to vaccinate, and we haven't been real successful at this point in getting our vaccination rate up.
Pretty direct correlation, we're the third lowest vaccination and third highest.
Correct.
Case.
Correct, and that hasn't changed since we started testing or vaccinating.
Didn't the governor get a third booster yesterday?
He got his second booster.
Second? I thought I read third.
Yes. So, you know, for our 65 and older population, we are at 88.8% fully vaccinated, and, you know, those are the individuals that I'm most concerned about. But considering Wycomico's percentage versus Maryland, Maryland as a whole has 95% of those 65 and older that are fully vaccinated. So, you know, we're still working on it, we will continue to work on it. We have not shut down our vaccination clinic, and as I said, we are out in the community at many different events trying to encourage vaccination. Our regular vaccination clinics are Mondays and Wednesdays, Mondays from 9:00 to 11:30 and Wednesdays from 1:00 to 3:00, and then we are out and about on weekends and some evenings. We are doing our regular testing one day a week from, on Tuesdays from 9:00 to 11:00. We are monitoring that to see if we need to increase those numbers or hours of testing as well. Moving on, behavioral health issues. Nationally, we're seeing an increase in drug-related overdose deaths during the 12-month period following COVID-19, which ended in, not COVID-19 didn't end, but the time period ended in April of 2021. There was a 28.5% increase in overdose deaths nationwide. Wycomico County is not spared in that. We have seen an increase in our numbers as well, and we've seen an increase in the number of overdose deaths, primarily from fentanyl-related issues. Most of the drugs that are coming out are laced with fentanyl at this point. Our COAT team that is partially funded by the county, during the first three quarters of fiscal year '22, the COAT team linked two-thirds of the individual, 66% of the clients that they were referred to them to treatment, and that was higher than in fiscal year '21. As you may recall, we had a decrease in our COAT referrals because the hospital had not allowed our COAT team into the hospital due to COVID. And from the first three quarters of FY '22, 91% of the previous clients were still in recovery six months after the first encounter, so we think that that is a, an astronomical success for our COAT team because the nationwide average is in the 20% to 30% mark. In addition, suicide is one of the issues that we're tracking. You know, with COVID, there was a lot of isolation and depression, and we are monitoring suicide rates, and one of the stats that we have is one in five county adults report having depression in 2019, and 15.5% had two or more weeks per month with poor mental As you may recall, we embarked with the hospital and Somerset County on our community health needs assessment, and we have completed that community health needs assessment, and our local health improvement coalition has reviewed the findings of that assessment, and we now have priority areas identified for the next three years because we have a three-year period in which we work on the priority areas. Priority one, which was present during the last community health needs assessment, is behavioral health. We will continue to work on that. Progress has been made, but continues to be a priority area primarily because of the, as I said earlier, the behavioral health issues that have surfaced due to COVID. Priority two is chronic disease and wellness, which will encapsulate the diabetes and cancer and some of the risk factors that come into play. We're going to be targeting physical activity as well as some of the food desert areas and smoking. And then priority three is access to healthcare and health equity. During the focus groups and the surveys that were done, it was identified that a lot of these individuals did not have access to healthcare or affordable healthcare, which was a concern, so we have decided to embark on addressing that as well.
Brewster?
Yes.
I have a question for you. I was at a school board meeting last week, and there were several parents that came in, they were concerned because their students weren't able to use the bathroom because there was so much vaping in the school bathrooms. And, I mean, we all, we all know that the issues come along with vaping, and I'm wondering if there's any, any way to, for you to address some of those issues that are happening within our public school buildings.
So we have an agreement with the school system that if an individual is found smoking, whether it's by tobacco products or by electronic devices, that they will be referred to the health department. I don't know what our referral numbers have been. I can get that information and get back to you, but I can certainly reach back out to the school system and remind them that we're available and we're willing to come in and do some education.
That would be great, thank you.
Certainly.
Is there a referral if they get caught smoking marijuana?
So, they can refer them to our substance abuse program and/or our substance prevention services, yes. There is, I don't know what the school's policy is on the referral. I believe the last I checked, we have, the school system wants the parents to be involved in that process.
So it wouldn't count as like a tobacco product?
No, it does not.
One quick comment regarding your behavior health. I know Title Health, their adolescent center is now fully operational, and they have their director in place, and, you know, for adolescents, that's a major asset now to our community that, in the past, due to shortage of clinical psychiatrists, you know, they always would have to go across the bay, and now, you know, they have that ability to receive treatment here and stay here.
Yes, and that is a positive for this community because there have been times that individuals under the age of 18 have stayed in the emergency department for five or more days because they didn't have access to a bed elsewhere in the state. So, the only other thing that I wanted to speak about is our county health rankings that came out in April. Not a whole lot has changed over the past five years. We remain in the lowest quartile on both health outcomes and health factors. If you look at the rest of the state, it kind of lays out that health is where you live, which was the theme of this Public Health Week or Month. And those counties that are financially wealthy, such as Montgomery and Howard County, have higher health rankings and are healthier in general because of the wealth of the jurisdiction. The last thing on my agenda is environmental health. I will say that rather than being able to increase our staffing, we've actually lost staffing, so we are, we are behind. I can't do the work if I don't have the staff to do the work. We are not alone. There are numerous counties across the state that are in this boat. One jurisdiction has actually turned back some of their environmental health responsibilities to the Maryland Department of the Environment because they don't have the staff to do the work. We are short-staffed by five and a half individuals. Tomorrow, I get back one of the staff that left to go to work for another jurisdiction. The reason that they left was they wanted to be closer to home, but they preferred to come back to Wycomico County because they felt that we were doing things the right way. I'm not real sure what that meant, so I left that one alone.
Is that the reason they came back?
Yes, they were very unhappy with how things were being done in the other jurisdiction.
So it didn't cost an increase in salary?
That one did not. You know, the grass is not always greener on the other side of the fence, as we all know. We did do a couple of other things. We have a new director. Dan Williams was only an interim director, and he asked to step down. He's still in the health department assisting us with duties. And Steve White is now the Director for Environmental Health. At some point, I hope to get him over here to introduce him to you all. So we have, as of tomorrow, we will have two and a half individuals trying to cover this entire county for well and septic. The state has done, the State Department of the Environment has done an assessment across the state. I have not seen those results yet, looking at our staffing needs, what is pending as far as applications, and what's the backlog. They have not provided the summary on that as of this point, but we looked at our average from time of submission of application till time of approval has been about 35 days. And yes, we need to shorten that, but given the fact that we've been functioning with one and a half people, I think that we have done pretty good getting those out. We are willing to work with anybody that has suggestions on how we can recruit. People are not out there. The other thing that we've done is twofold. We started hiring environmental health aides. They are limited in what they can do, so they can't go out and do PERC tests, they can't do soil studies, but they can go out and help us dig holes, they can go out and help with pool reviews, they can help with restaurant inspections. The other thing that I've done is I went and spoke at Salisbury University. We have at least one student that is going to intern with us this year. She's in an environmental studies class, and hoping that with an internship for the summer, we can begin to attract some of these individuals to come onboard as an environmental specialist. So I will entertain any questions that you may have.
So the, the letter that we wrote to support the pay increase?
Yeah.
That didn't happen?
It did not. And part, they say that part of the survey that they just did on our vacancies and our delays is to try to get that in the hopper for this coming budget cycle. So we're, the earliest that we're looking at an increase would be July, unless they do this off-budget.
July.
Of 2023.
Okay, not this July.
Right.
This is just a little one-off here, but do we still have the Chesapeake Bay Fund for anyone who has a failing septic system? Is it still available?
Bay Restoration Dollars, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
It's still available. Yes.
That was, I believe, the council sent a letter trying to endorsing Senate, Senate Bill 113, and that not only would allow, would have allowed an increase in pay, but it would have transferred the authority from Department of Health to MDE, if I recall correctly. And it was also, I believe, in a set of parameters on when deadlines had to be met.
Correct.
There's a lot, I don't think it came out, I don't think it came out of committee.
It did not, and it was actually to move the Board for Environmental Specialists from MDH to MDE, and I will tell you that the Board just moved to MDH two years ago from MDE, so I'm not real sure what the impetus was behind that.
Some people suggested to me, because you and I have had a lot of conversations over the last few weeks, and I appreciate the time. Part of that is what the public doesn't understand sometimes, because questions that I get asked is why don't we contract this out? And if we're having trouble hiring people, why don't we bring in independent contractors to do, you know, to do either permitting or the inspections? And what, what problems does that create?
Well, the law requires us to be able to replicate what was done by a consultant or a contractor, so it's actually double work, and the property owner is then paying the health department for the permit and also paying a consultant for the work. That could be beneficial in the end, but, you know, it may delay the process even further once we get the information from the consultant. We have to review it and go out and be able to replicate the work. One of the things that we discussed last Wednesday at our health officers' meeting was the possibility of the Maryland Department of the Environment getting a statewide contract for an engineering firm to look at design, system designs, and that would take that off of us. We would just have to do the technical review for the system designs. And I will tell you, designing septic systems is one of the hardest thing that my staff has to do, so, and very time-consuming, so that would be beneficial as well, but I don't know where we are with that as far as whether or not the Maryland Department of the Environment is going to move forward with that.
Anyway, we also have discussed the idea of whether or not the county itself could increase the pay, sort of create our own bonuses for the specialists in order to get them to where they need to be as an incentive. Is that, is that a feasible option for the county?
I will say that that has worked in other jurisdictions, such as Howard County. There is not a jurisdiction on the eastern shore that has done that, but Howard County, they, the county offers a salary supplement for their staff that work in the environmental health program, and they, they have been able to attract other individuals, but they are basically taking them from another jurisdiction because then they're getting paid more. So is that an option? It's, it's an option. I don't know that that will create additional people wanting to come here. We don't know what that would entail at this point as far as desire to come to the county to work.
What, what do you think we would be exposing ourselves to as far as the cost to maybe, if we were to implement such a program?
Well, if, you know, if we looked at providing a $5,000 supplement for each of our staff, it would be about $57,000 to provide stipends to all of our environmental specialists and our trainee. That's the other thing that I want the council to be aware of. While I say that we have one and a half positions, one of those is a trainee that can't do the work themselves, everything has to be signed off, so we actually have a half of a person right now.
So the, the full one we have is a trainee?
Yes, yes.
That's not good.
Yes.
Yeah, understood. Honestly, I think where we are with environmental health, and you, we recognize, I know you do 100%, is that we're at like a critical juncture where it's almost as if development in Wycomico County has come to a complete standstill. I met a gentleman in Willards who was, actually lived in Delaware, but he had property in Wycomico County. He goes, "John," he goes, "your development in Wycomico County is dead right now." And I've had, I've started getting calls again from realtors, and you know how we always get that sense where it ebbs and flows and, you know, and now it just seems like that tide is beginning, beginning to come back now, where everybody's having a lot of problems because you're bringing an industry to a standstill simply because of the fact that they're not be able to get timely permitting and inspections. I appreciate your quire on that.
You, well, yes, but I will say that if you look at the number of permits that we are being requested, one of the things that is happening in this jurisdiction as well as happening throughout the state is home sales have gone up, and many of the lenders are requiring a septic review before they go to closure, and many of those are requiring a replacement system. So while, you know, we are at a juncture in the county where the number of permit requests have gone up while our staffing has gone down drastically, so it's the perfect storm for this county. And we prioritize the work. We do failing septic's first, as well as our restaurant complaints. We have almost 500 food service facilities in this jurisdiction that we have to inspect sometimes quarterly, and that falls within the realm of the environmental health program too. And yes, we get quite a few complaints on food service facilities, and that is one of the priorities that we have to review with immediacy, as well as the failing septic systems. One of the other things that we have tried to put in place recently, we know that people have deadlines to go to settlement, so we're beginning to ask people, you know, is this permit related to a settlement issue? And if so, we try to get the date that they're going to settlement so that we can try to meet that date.
And when I make the comments I do, I'm really referring to single-family homes more than I am larger complexes because a lot of the larger complexes are part of an annexation process with the city anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
I feel sometimes that this might even be by design from the state to try to slow up building in rural communities by not giving the funding and the support that the health department needs to get out in the field. It's just my thoughts on that. I think that's probably one of the reasons that it's not happening, and I'm not reflecting on you, because you're not getting the funded, funding you need to get it done, so I hope I'm wrong about that, but...
Well, the historical piece to budgeting for our environmental health program, Maryland Department of the Environment has never provided funding to the environmental health program. The only funding we get from Maryland Department of the Environment is the Bay Restoration Funds, which funds a piece of a person. It doesn't even fund a half-time person. So MDE does not give us any dollars. Our environmental health program is funded through the county's budget, as well as the fees that we collect for applications and permits.
I've had the pleasure of sitting on several of your boards over my term in office, and I, I have to say, we are truly blessed to have you in this county, not just with the health department, but the behavioral health and the other outreach that you have, so I truly appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
You do a lot. Any other questions, comments? Any other comments?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brewster. Thank you, Ms. Brewster.
And motion to adjourn from the local Board of Health and reconvene into legislative session.
The move.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Post? We've now reconvene under the first item of business as the Wycomico County Council legislative session. Now our public comments. If you have any public comments in general you'd like to make, come in the podium, please, state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. I appreciate your patience with us in this morning, but it is still...
it is still morning, so that's a good thing.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is David James. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. And I'm trying to find my notes. I have been, of course, I am speaking of the west side of Wycomico. I've spoken to several people who are concerned. First is the mosquito spraying on the west side, top and down 349 area. They're still being charged $50 a person. With three people in that neighborhood, actually, if they do that, then the price goes down to $40. We're pretty sure that's in the budget for mosquito spraying. I heard that, I think at the last meeting. Again, they did say if you need a copy of that letter they're getting, they will get that to you. Just let me know. I don't know, I'm pretty sure everybody's aware in those last three weeks, there's been two fires in the, we tip in Royal Oak area. And the concern down there is these dilapidated houses. Of course, I had spoke to Councilwoman Ackley and Councilwoman Davis over there before about what the county can do about these buildings. And truthfully, they said, pretty much, for right now, nothing. The problem is now, that's two and three weeks. And the concern down there is they don't want another Akamak situation. They came up with a suggestion, actually Jeff Merritt came up with a situ, I mean, with this suggestion. And they said, what about giving them a tax credit to those people who have those properties, and asking them to allow the fire department to use those old buildings as training, training things? The problem is, a lot of these people don't want their buildings tore down, because their taxes go up. But if we give them a tax credit, it gets rid of the possibility of an arson. Just saying. The third thing was, they were concerned with, there's actually roads department left, I think, was the fact that the sides of the road going down there are not being cut. Of course, one of them actually said, are they just waiting for the Memorial Day weekend? Or, I mean, to all the tourists and make us look good? Or they're concerned about those roads getting, I mean, I know the gas prices are up, but so is the grass. So just want y'all to kind of think about that. But please, this mosquito spraying thing, they're really getting concerned. I mean, it's getting warmer out, and mosquitoes are about that big down there. So, all right? Thank you, everyone.
Kim Groves, I'm a county resident here in Wycomico County. And I want to go back and address Resolution 51 dash, just to make sure I'm looking at it right. Yes, 51-2022 about the spending grant to extend the runway at the airport. This is something that's been, I know it's been thrown around off and on for forever, it feels like. Every time I hear airport and runway expansion, I get all excited, because I'm thinking, oh, boy, we'll go somewhere other than Charlotte or Philly. So as a citizen that has seen the growth of the Wycomico, Salisbury Wycomico Regional Airport, from the small terminal to the large, modern space it is today, I'm glad to see this expansion's finally being funded. However, I have also seen the services that have been provided by the airline Piedmont US Air, American, whatever they are this week, diminished from serving as far away as Roanoke, to now only having flights to Philly and Charlotte. For an airport such as this, I find these restrictions unacceptable, as should this council. This area deserves better. With the retirement of the de Havilland jets and the upgrades to the newer Embraer Corporation jets, they are really nice. My husband actually had an interview with Embraer when we lived in Florida. But the Embraer jets, they are very, very nice. There is no, not a single good reason why our airport could not serve New York City, Baltimore, Washington, Richmond, Orlando, Roanoke, Raleigh, or any, any other place in the, in the region. The only reason I can see is that no one has pressured American Airlines to expand their service to other cities. I certainly hope with this half million runway expansion, there will be pressure placed on American to expand their service, or find another airline willing to truly turn our airport into a regional player in the air travel arena. Thank you.
Here, here. Good afternoon. My name is Monica Brooks, and I'm a resident of Wycomico County, Maryland. And I'm not even going to say anything about the airport, because, okay. We're the second largest airport, but yes, I agree that we need expansion with opportunities to go other places. And because I'm a, I'm a fan of funding the airport. And we have a great opportunity to bring more jobs here. It's, it's a greater opportunity for revenue. And if we're going to be the second largest, we might as well take advantage of that and expand our options a bit. But I'm going to talk about a few other things. Okay. So since this is Public Works Week, yay, Public Works Week, I want to again highlight the need for water and sewer for the county residents. On the plan that is listed, there are, let me pull it up. Okay. So on this list of different places that is on the plan for the county and sewer, consideration Tyuskin, Mardele, Whitehaven, Parsonsburg, Coburn, Coburn Mills, so many, all these different spaces, not one of these entities is on the west side. None of our District One, none of our areas in District One are on this list, or on this west side, for consideration for this water and sewer. Now, I ask the county, good Lord, planning and zoning, for the comprehensive growth plan. And we have comprehensive growth areas in our district, but we don't have, we're not listed here. And so I would like the county to reconsider that. And because we have several of our residents on the west side who are really, really wanting water and sewer. There are certain parts that have, that have been annexed. Sassifraz is one of the ones that's in that area off of 50. But I haven't seen anything for District One. John, you look like you want to say something.
Yeah, just for clarification, because a lot of times, countywide, when you say west side, people are thinking about Tyuskin, Fattipkin, Whitehaven. You're talking about the west side of Salisbury.
West side of Salisbury. Thank you. The west side of Salisbury. And, District, yes, within our district. So that is an area that those residents in that area right off 50, which is called the reservations, Jersey Road, they are asking for water and sewer. And so we need it there as well. Moving on to, okay, oh, environmental health. So I just wanted to see if there's ways that we can try to fight on behalf of our health department to get the help that they need, especially with environmental health. Certainly, we still, for Wycomico County, as of this year, we're listed in the top 5% for cancer rates in the, in the country, not the state, but cancer rates in the country. And we still have highest respiratory rates in the state. So our, I mean, I don't even know how Lori Brewster is even walking, why she, how she's even standing. And it's not at your fault. I'm saying, I want us to try to figure a way to advocate, so that they can get proper funding and enough people to assist them. Even turning some stuff to MDE. MDE is understaffed. They don't even have enough people. We have them coming out here every blue moon to check on certain violations. When they do, they're not able to come back two, four, two, three years to even follow up, because they don't have enough staffing. I mean, I currently serve on the Maryland State Commission for Environmental Justice and Sustainable Communities, and we always talk to them about that very thing. Why is this going? And why is this? Well, we, we have this many positions open. We are, we don't have enough staff. So I don't even know if that is going to be the answer for our health department to get help from MDE, because MDE is not necessarily in a position to assist them. The last thing I'll bring up at this point is about the roads. So in 2018, I know Governor Hogan gave out all this money, we're going to give all this money to the roads, and there was some money, funding given out to the eastern shore, a lot of it to Talbot County. I don't know how much Wycomico County got of that. But I will tell you that there are a lot of roads in our county. And, and I'm not even talking about paving new roads, I'm talking about existing roads. Even if you look at the intersection of Jersey Road and Naylor Mill Road, horrible. I've never seen anything done with that.
It's part of the city.
It's part of the city.
Good Lord. Dang it. Is that where it starts?
Yes, that's our intersection.
It ends.
Okay, right there. Okay. Well, thank you so much. Because part of, if you go down the other way, part of it is county again. It's so ridiculous. Okay. Thank you. Apologies, apologies to that, for bringing that up here. I will know where to bring that part up.
Excuse me. Governor Hogan, not Governor Hogan, but the state took away our roads money. What was it, 2007, 2008? They took away $7 million a year. They didn't give us more money. We got a little bit the past few years. Now, a lot of money came down from the state for state highways, but not county roads. So.
Interesting. Okay. So thank you very much for that information. So I know where to go for that. And that's all I'll say for now. Thank you. I got to get back to work. That's why I'm wearing my shirt. I'm in the field today, so.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Tawna D. Watson. A lot has been said this morning.
Mrs. Watson.
But I will say, as a businessperson located on West Road, going towards Naylor Mill Road, I did figure out what belonged, what was the responsibility of the county and the city. And I will say, every time I call the county, every time I call the city for the appropriate areas that they're responsible for, they always respond. So that is very much appreciated. I was listening to Mrs. Brewster concerning health issues. And I know that we all can attest to the fact that, as we come out of this COVID season, because of the isolation, what has become very apparent across our country is the level or increase of mental issues. And I know when I consider being a lifelong resident of Wycomico County, and when I think about the welfare, the well-being of the citizens here, I want to make sure that we are all safe. So one of my main concerns is that of mental health. And I wanted to ask Mrs. Brewster the question, what avenues are set in place in which the citizens of Wycomico County can reach out to the health department to know that there is available those services pertaining to mental health? As I witnessed, and as we all heard on the news this past weekend, what's happened in Buffalo, I don't want to think of something like that ever happening in Wycomico County. So, and I know those kinds of things are a result of having mental health issues. So those are things, in addition to the nice roads, in addition to the spraying for mosquitoes, if we cannot be assured and have security in knowing that we will all be safe, I think that should be one of our priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. In the public comments. Counsel comments?
To address the water and sewer, the state has mandated that we must take care of the critical areas in the county before we can go anywhere else. And those areas you name, they're very critical. There have failing septics and waters in those areas. So when and if we do get the water and sewer uprunning, those areas will have to take priority over the others. There is water and sewer in District One, in some of the areas. And Ms. Tawna, you get confused, you guys get confused about city and county. I learned this a long time ago with state police. If it's a white sign, that's county. If it's a green sign, that's city. As far as the airport, we want to track everything to the airport, but we have to do the rebuild of the airport. We have to extend the runway. We have to get the, the equipment out there in order to attract other airlines here. You just can't go out and get an airline and come here. They have to have a reason to come here. And you have to show them that you have the ability to maintain their facility and their airline to do that. And that's what, we have our director sitting over here, Mr. Rudy, and he's doing an excellent job in getting us in that way, in that direction. Thank you.
Eric, it's good to see you in person.
I've been out of commission for the last two weeks, and I'm happy to say I wasn't one of the COVID statistics. But I've been pretty ill. Thank you for allowing me to do the Zoom. I envy people that use their phone for notes. When you see them go up to the count, to the podium there. And I always had a problem with not being able to see it. But now, obviously, I have a problem with not knowing how to turn all the volumes down when I turn my phone up. But anyway, I've got a couple of notes on here. I would like to congratulate Salisbury University baseball team for winning their coast-to-coast Athletic Conference championship this past weekend. They won it last year as well. This is their 17th conference title. And you may recall, last year, they won the Division III College World Series. So our university does a lot of things that we are proud of. They start the division tournament, Division III tournament this Friday, but it'll be in Ohio. Also, Salisbury University, I've got these notes somewhere on here. The softball team won the NCAA regional championship. The women's lacrosse advances to the NCAA third round. The men's lacrosse advances to the NCAA quarterfinal. So that little university over there, we in Wycomico County are proud of that university. They have good athletics, and they have good academics. So keep rooting for them. So, thank you.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out today. I greatly appreciate it. And my, my time in office has been consistent with the road and the ditch, the ditches in Nanticoke Road. So I, I definitely get it, I hear it. And as the representative, I can forward the request to the state, but that is a state road. I, anytime anyone contacts me, I, like I said, I forward it on to our state, but I can't, I can't make them do it. And I think probably one of the most powerful things in getting that done is having citizens reach out to them. So I encourage you to do that. Thanks.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming in the public comments that were made. In reference to the airport, we're very lucky to have Piedmont here, American Airlines. Their primary purpose for being here is pretty much maintenance, so that they can maintain the, the planes between flights. I would love to see flights to Baltimore. I would love to see other airlines coming in. But from, from what I understand, from, from the discussions that I've had, that is not likely going to happen for some time. Piedmont is going to go, they're going to have the Charlotte, they're going to have the Philly flights. And there are limitations, and we have to work with. Again, we're doing everything we can to keep them happy and to keep them here. And we want to continue that. So we are making improvements along with the runway. We're always also looking at means by which we can upgrade the, the mechanics, mechanic shops, and where this work actually happens. So that's a really big plus for, for Wycomico County. Yes, we are the second largest airport in the, in the state of Maryland. As it is right now, the, the, our greatest appeal to an airlines here is the fact that we are maintaining those, and we have the people here, the mechanics here, to service those planes. So our focus as of right now is to try to enhance that program, so that we can continue to have the service that's required for these planes when they come in, and for the new planes as they upgrade, as you suggested. So the good thing is that with the new planes, even with the runway, we'll be able, they'll be able to get off the ground quicker, they'll be able to carry more passengers, and that'll be a plus for, you know, for, for our community as a whole. It's not the majority of our revenue, but it will be, it is a quality of life that we really certainly do appreciate in Wycomico County. And we, we don't ever want to compromise the airport in anything that we do. Outside of that, I attended a west side fundraiser. They had steak dinner. And it was very well attended. I hope they made a lot of money, because I think they should have, because it was, it was a full house. Pemberton Park, they had their music festival. It was rained out a couple of weeks ago, but they had the most recent one, Steve Miller's here. And Steve, it was a really well-attended event. We're really glad to see it. And my wife and I enjoyed that very much. I applaud you for taking the initiative to make those things happen in Wycomico County. Again, it's another quality of life. And I was able to attend the Fruitland Fire Department's Awards and Installation Banquet and Swearing New Officers. And we have a lot of great people in Fruitland. We have a lot of great, great volunteers in the fire departments, all throughout the county. I had the opportunity to be in Fruitland that one time, at the Elks Lodge, and was able to, to witness the awards that, that were given out. So many people doing so many service calls, day and night, for, for Fruitland area, and to install the new officers. Chief Robin Townsend received an award 30 years as fire chief in Fruitland. He served as a fire chief for 30 years. So imagine, imagine the workload he has compared to what most of us do. Anyway, Joe, I'll, I'll end it right there. So I'm trying to make it as quick as I can.
Don't apologize to me. You can talk all day.
Well, I'll try not to campaign.
You're standing between us and lots, John. You're standing between us and lunch, John, okay?
Yeah, we hear you.
You're standing between us and lunch.
There you go.
So entertain a motion to adjourn, so we can go into open work session, followed by lunch.
Set move.
Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned.